To our monthly Zoom meeting, I'll call a meeting to order now and roll call Jeff.
Okay, Mayor Miranda.
I am here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Michelle's freaking me out a little bit, she was going in circles. Trustee Vellado. He's here.
Breaking here.
And trustee Murphy.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get on our meeting here and we have the first.
Plans out of the, I mean, the things out of the.
Oh, sorry to disrupt. My secretary is getting me my. I pay for work. Thank you. Free leave.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, so first we have a financial update. I believe Michelle's with us tonight or?
Yes.
Yes, she is.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle. I have to unmute her one second.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, there she is.
Hello, Michelle.
So I guess first ways if you want to go through some of the highlights and then if there's any questions from the board.
Sure. Um, so you know, we're one quarter in three months. So tax collection for the first three months is at ninety seven and a half percent. Same thing where we were last year, actually slightly higher by a couple point points of. Tax penalties could be at minimum an extra thirty two hundred in revenue. But usually not everybody's going to pay by September, so probably bring in an extra four or five thousand instead of just three. For CHIPS reimbursement, we were finally paid for the Garden Street paving, the Van Etten. They only submitted one bill so far, so once they submit their other bill, we could pay the rest of their contract once everything's finished and then we can resubmit for the rest for CHIPS. We're trying to pull down money from the state as fast as we can, just in case the state decides to start withholding. Some municipalities, they're withholding twenty percent of their aid.
We lost you, Michelle. You're on mute.
Oh, sorry. We didn't, they didn't withhold twenty percent from us, but I don't want to lose any state aid or have withheld, so as soon as we get make payments, I want to submit reimbursements. Just like our EFC bond is done. We drew down all the money, reimbursed fully for that, so that's clear. I just want to make sure that, you know, we get what we're entitled to. But the state is making changes to bring in more revenue to make up for their loss. New York State Retirement in two, it'll impact us in two years. They're raising their employer contribution rates. Like four percent on police and fire and two percent on employees, employee, right, regular employees. But these are for older tiers, but I would have to assume that even for newer tiers, we'll see a percentage increase. I just don't know what those numbers are. They haven't been released. The village has a healthy mix of older tiers and newer tiers. But the majority of the salary is moving towards the newer tiers. For actual financial reports attached, I did projections for revenue and expense throughout the whole year. I assumed that the majority of things would equal the budget unless I knew of something that would be changed. For example, I knew that, you know, we saved money on vehicle payments for police and highway. So we started the year with a good savings of, you know, almost twenty five thousand. We are losing sea streak, that's twenty two thousand. But we should have sale of property to cancel that out. We need to purchase some type of new garbage truck. We did receive twenty six thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenue from insurance. And we did budget for a dump truck, so if we push off a dump truck payment, we can make a garbage truck payment. So overall, you know, I made some positive and negative changes through some of the projections, but I think that the village is in a good, pretty good spot despite COVID right now. You know, I spoke with the mayor earlier and he mentioned, you know, let, we might need to be concerned for the trickle down effect from sales tax revenue from the state and the county. So I think we should still spend a little conservatively, but at least we're not crunching right now, you know, scrambling for money like some other places are. And for water and sewer, with all the new Butterfield condos opening up. And I guess everybody being home, water and sewer usage and flat rates are both up from this time last year. So that's a little extra for their respective funds. Other than that, um, it's so early in the year to really do real projections. I'll do them again another three months and then at nine months. But if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I got one quick question. You said the sales tax trickle down? What does that mean?
So New York State is pulling sales tax. And if they pull in less money, they're probably going to give less money to the municipalities. They're doing that already now in like. They don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Michelle, where do you think that would hit us? You know, the.
I don't know. I don't even know if it will. We do have state aid, sixteen thousand and change that comes in every year. We have the CHIPS program. But other than a lot of that we need grants, so we're only spending money on the projects because we got the grant to do the project for the most part. Like, we're doing a lot of tree work. That's, we needed to do some tree work, but we didn't need to do all of it right now, but we got the grant. So even if the state does slash some state aid down the road. The majority of the revenue that the village brings in is from taxes.
Okay. We set our budget for next year. Do you think there will be a, usually we get a cap on how much we can raise taxes. Do you think they'll lower that down to zero or something close?
I think I haven't heard that they've changed it, so it would still be two percent or the rate of inflation plus growth. I don't, I really haven't heard one way or the other, so I'm, I can't speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? As always, thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Feel free to send me some emails if you think of something.
Okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Okay, next we have the police report is Larry on or no?
No, he's not.
Not there. Okay, uh, let's see. I'll just give total numbers. If anyone that's interested in this out in Zoom world, um, you can ask Jeff or you can actually access this from from our website, right, Jeff?
Yes.
So if you need, need the total breakdown, that's where you can find it. Total number of calls for service were seventy two. Total number year to date was four hundred and fifty eight. Total number of tickets issued was seventy three. Total number to date, uh, four hundred and ninety one. And those are kind of the highlights for that. Let's see, moving ahead to our monthly reports, I, unless I have the package Jeff gave me, so not a lot here. I don't have, is someone from recreation on or no?
No, nobody from rec planning or ZBA here. None of them submitted reports.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the town of Phillips Town. Or no?
Yep, I'm here, I'm here, Dave. I did send my report a little late today. I apologize for it. Anyway, good evening, everybody, and I hope everyone had a nice Labor Day weekend. So here's my report. Let me get it up. Okay. As you know, we've been, the town, the town hall's been open by appointment only, but if someone comes to the door and knocks, we're going to let them in and work with them wherever they need to do. Our building department has always been open and we've been pretty busy over these last several months as well. Town Hall reservation renovations, I like the, I'm a little bit disappointed, really not much work was done at all over the last five weeks. The elevator is in, but it's not a hundred percent completed. The stairs are in, they're a hundred percent completed, but the contractor, he did tell us early on that he had, you know, he does a lot of schoolwork and he had to hit the school, so he's supposed to be back hitting his hard and heavy, starting later this, this week, so we're told. Unfortunately, I personally don't think we're going to be in by the end of this year, but let's see what happens. We're still, hopefully we can, but personally, I don't think we're going to make the year end, but we'll see what happens. Again, we're still moving forward with the highway garage. Plans are still in process and being prepared to go out to bid. We passed a resolution the other night to award a bid for the AV Road, AV Road Culvert project. We're giving it to Land's Works Excavation. We've worked them in the past and its amount is seventy four thousand, six hundred dollars. We've been very pleased with their work and also too, he was the lower bidder. He outbid the highest other bidder was sixty five thousand dollars higher than this one, so we think we made a good move with this. We're still offering the Food Town, Food Town vouchers at the food pantry on Saturdays when they had the Food Town, the pantry pickup. Planning Board, we resumed our two public hearings. We're still open. We did close one of them. Like I said last month, I thought the Zoom meeting with the public hearing worked out really well so far, and as of right now, we're continuing to move forward Zoom meetings for the planning board of this coming month as well. We passed a lease, a resolution to purchase lease for a new international HX six twenty truck for the Highway Department. This was in the budget for this year as well. We passed a resolution immediately terminating the intermissal agreement with Village Coal Spring in our Building Department Code Enforcement Services. We waived the sixty day notice as Dave indicated, they wanted to. I did speak with Greg this morning. I did speak to him last week. He's more than happy to work with your new building inspector, do any try, any transition that you'd like to see. He's more than happy to do that. Just let us know. Give him a phone call. He'll come down and work with her as well on that. So like I said, we want to, you know, unfortunately, you know, it didn't work out. We tried. I, you know, I gotta give it a, we give it a try. It didn't seem to work for you, so we, we terminated, but it is what it is and just move forward. That's all there is to do about it. Roberto Miller gave us a climate smart program updated as well. We're implementing a refrigeration reclaim management program. We're getting these funds from people who signed up for solar, uh, solar energy and so forth, clean energy. We got a, we got a, I think fifty dollars for each person that did, and I think we got over eight, nine thousand dollars. So we implemented this program, which we think is very good. This is definitely going to help us make our fire, our carbon footprint reduce quite a bit. These refrigerants and freon gases are very, very toxic to the air. And the plan is anybody from the community can go up and drop off the refrigerator appliance, anything with freon on it, and once we have twenty five units or so, we will get the qualified contractor to come in and remove the freon. We also indicated if people don't have access to get there, they can call the town hall and we'll make arrangements possibly to get that picked up and brought up there as well. Unfortunately, Roberto indicated to us that he's going to be leaving, leaving the area probably late this year, early next year. And he's going to, unfortunately, he's going to be, we're going to have to refill his position. And I like to give Roberto a lot of credit. He did, he did a lot of work over the last several years to get the climate smart program up and running, and I think he did a tremendous job. We're going to miss him. We had a workshop to pave the rest of the East Mountain Road south to connect East Mountain Road north. It was eleven hundred feet of pavement. This was scheduled to be done several years ago, but unfortunately never got around to doing it, so we're in the process of doing it now. We had a lot of people, as you know, road, dirt roads come up, people get excited and so forth like that, and they have the right to speak their opinion. We did have quite a few people at the workshop and we had quite a few people at the town board meeting last week as well voicing their opinion, but all in all, we all felt it was the best thing to do to pave that last section. And to be quite honest, the amount of emails we got were probably fifty fifty in favor of it and fifty fifty, fifty percent of the people were not in favor of, but we determined it's the best thing to do at this time, so. I like to encourage everybody to do a comprehensive plan. Is running a survey. I would greatly appreciate as many people could take that survey as possible. Go to PhillipsTown2020.com and write in the very first sentence there, there's a link you can click on to get to do the survey. Greatly appreciate anyone who hasn't done it to do so. And just remind everybody to complete your census for 2020. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank, thank you also for the board for, for terminating so quickly our, you know, honoring our request and the IMA. Like you said, I think it was definitely worth, worth going through that process and, you know, I think it was, was valuable and we learned a lot and didn't work out perfectly and, but that's how life goes. So thank you guys for working with us. I know we work on, on other projects, so this is, isn't an end all, that's for sure.
No, not at all. Like I said, we gave it a try, you know, I thought everyone thought it was working good, but you guys are the people that make that determination and obviously you thought you could do something better. Not a big deal. Maybe something in the future we could try it again or come up with some, some other program where we can share services hopefully in the future. That's all.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, well, thank you.
Have a good night. All right.
All right, next up is historic district review. Do we have? Kathleen there or?
Yeah, Kathleen's on the phone. I just unmuted her.
Hi.
Hey, Kathleen.
Sorry, I'm holding laundry. Sorry for my delay. Don't have a lot to report this month. It's, it's quite quiet for this time of year. I suspect though, given all of the home sales that are happening now, that we may have a busy winter with application that will offset, offset the quiet summer. In August, we reviewed and approved applications for fences at Fish Gill Avenue and Thirty Three Market. We also met with the homeowners and the architect of sixty five Palding Avenue. That's the roughly southernmost lot of the three single family homes on the Butterfield site facing Palding Avenue. After a well attended public hearing, lots of neighbors came out, we approved the application with material modifications to satisfy the commitments made by the developer to the original certificate of appropriateness for the entire project. We only have one application for September. It's for a unit at the Forge Gate complex. I'd be interested to hear from Marie or others who remember. It sounds like looking at our records that the development actually happened after the district was formed. So the materials are all, sorry, there's a flag going by. So it's a lot of modern materials and we would like to be able to, to meet, to help, to help the folks where we don't often get requests there, but we are coming to the time when the materials in that development are going to be aging, and so we'd like to meet up with the homeowners association in Charlotte, the new building inspector code enforcement officer, to talk through how we make that process smooth and easy for folks. The materials that are currently provided to the property owners by the homeowners association are recommend materials that are not allowable under the guidelines, so we need to just close that loop and, and find a, a good way to be able to serve the folks who live down there. But I will say that Charlotte, Al and I met with Charlotte. Charlotte was right on top of it. Charlotte Mountain, the new code enforcement officer. She's really superb. And she did a really thorough job of reading the standards and reading our ordinance and asked good questions. So we're looking forward to a really strong working relationship with her. We are still waiting for SHPO to get back to us, our regional representative to get back to us with the questions about the code. They are both overloaded and working at home, so I'm hoping we get back to them soon. And then a question for you all. We have, as a board, discussed increasing the advertising for public hearings, including one placement in the current, the Friday before each meeting. We have taken note of how the town of Phillips Town is taking out small ads for public notices and suspecting that that is more noticed by folks than the little tiny ad at the back of the PCNR. We still obviously have to continue with the PCNR because they are the paper of record, but we would like to do a supplemental ad in the PCNR. It's also a different readership. And so to do that, we think it'd cover a wider cross section of the community. And to do it would require a slight increase in public hearing fees. And the question is, is that something that we propose to you? How, how do you feel about that general idea? I don't know if it's an idea that you've considered. Or what we would need to do next if we decided to go in that direction.
Kathleen, I thought there had been some consideration within the last year or so to evaluate the fees charged by the HDRB for when someone makes an application to the HDRB. Has that progressed to any point? I'm assuming that this would be incremental on top of that. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, so what we were looking at with, in that particular timeframe with questions was when we have, how long? So for a period, sorry, let me think of how to frame this. So for a period of time, we had a number of applications that stretched out over several year period. There were ongoing modifications to the application that required quite a lot of Jeff's time in dealing with the application, quite a lot of time on the part of the building inspector and quite a lot of time on the board. So the question we were asking then was, does it make sense to? There's a, there was a one time application fee and the question that we're asking, we were, have been asking is, does it make sense to say, okay, this application fee applies to say a six month period? And anything after that would be considered a new application and new fee required. Obviously, our applications tanked after March, so we need to get back to a more regular period to figure out if that works or not. This was just looking simply at, you know, what it costs for advertising the public hearing, both the cost in the PCNR, the material, the signs that are now hung. And thinking of approaching the current to see if we could make some sort of arrangement with them. I think that the town of Phillips Town gets reduced cost for this, the size of their small ads. We didn't want to go forward with that until we ran the idea by you to see what you thought of it and how you thought we should proceed.
So Jeff and Charlotte and I are having a discussion currently. I'm going to go off on a tangent, but, but circle back. Currently, a building permit, the original application is a two year app, a two year period of time. And it, it, with a six month, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jeff. If the construction hasn't started in six months, the building permit is considered void at that point. If construction has begun, then there's a two year period for the construction to be completed. There are additionally one year renewal periods, of which there are a total of two. So you can have, you can have up to four years for a building permit. Would something similar be appropriate for the HDRB?
So. I think that's, that's basically, that's the kind of conversation we were having about these continuing conversations and determining what, I'm sorry, there's, I, I chose a bad place to sit. I'm sorry if there's noise in the background. The, it's figuring out what period makes sense. Six months seems reasonable to me, and then we do have a renewal period if your, if your certificate expires. You have, you have a year to start the work and if you just have two years until the certificate expires to finish the work and then you need to come back in. So we have that structure in place already for the certificates. It's a question of when we consider, when Jeff would consider an application received, a new application versus a continuation of a previous application.
So what Jeff and Charlotte and I have been talking about is that on, an applicant for a building permit. They would, we are going to request that they submit their application to renew within thirty days of the termination of their original building permit or the renewal. So you might consider something like that, thirty months, thirty days before the application is terminated or scheduled to terminate. They need to apply for a, an extension.
Thirty days before it is to expire, did you say? So it seems to me to make sense, and this is just me, obviously we have to take it back and see what other folks think. It seems to me to make sense that you keep those timelines consistent. So that everything expires at one time and people aren't being asked to keep track of multiple deadlines.
Yeah, and currently, the, the way the building permit would work is if you do not extend, if you do not apply for an extension and the building permit expires, a stop work order occurs.
Ah, okay.
Because you are no longer covered by the building permit.
Would the, or be, would we be discussing this and would the mayor be involved in this discussion?
No, we don't like to hear, have the mayor involved in any of these discussions.
Okay, I'm not going to get in the middle of this. You guys should talk about it and then let us know what you'd like to do.
Dave, Dave, you'll, you'll see this in chapter forty, under building construction.
Okay, I think, I think we just went really off the rails on this question about advertising.
Yeah, so I mean, this isn't what we were looking for right now. I guess the question is, we, we'd like to explore what the costs would be with the current and see if we could get a rate. Is that something that? I don't, is it maybe some of the other boards would be interested in, the trustees, the ZBA, the planning board? It seems like a better, a better way to capture people's attention visually.
Do you have any idea what the cost would be or what the Phillips Town is paying for those small ads?
I know what the regular rates are, but I don't know the rate that Phillips Town gets.
I, I can't, unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, I didn't know you were still there. Hey, Bob. All right, so, so we'll gather some more information. It sounds like in concept, you're interested in the idea and we'll come back.
Public hearings are there?
Say that again?
Approximately, how many public hearings are there average in a year?
Well, it's been an unusual year, but I would say three to five.
Right, okay.
This year, that's this year.
No, it's me thinking about setting aside COVID, what would generally be.
Okay.
Public hearing.
And you're talking about passing this fee, whatever it is, on to the applicant.
Yes, unless, and, and this would mean some analysis with Michelle, unless we determine that we have enough. Hey, guys, shh, just for a moment, please. Sorry. I'm almost done. Unless when Michelle compares what we bring in versus what we spend and sees that it's an, it's an appropriate amount, we have enough to cover.
Technically, escrow costs should cover the cost of, cover the cost of advertising. So if.
Don't collect an escrow for every, every hearing.
So that's, I know for planning board and ZBA, it's different because we do collect the escrow for every public hearing, so those costs will be covered. I'm trying to think of what situations with the HDRB do we not?
Well, someone's putting an addition on the house. We haven't collected escrow, as far as I recall, we haven't collected escrow for anything other than the seeker reviews. So anyway, I don't want to take the, your, we obviously need to figure out some more information, but the concept seems like something to look at.
To pursue. Kathleen, you asked the question of, when did the Forge Gate apartments get built? What was the year that the district was enacted?
Seventy six. Al thought they were built after the district was formed, but before there were design standards.
I think, I think they were built after as well. They're definitely built after Springbrook. I can go look it up if you want.
Yeah, I definitely think they were built after Springbrook as well. That was the same builder that built them. He built Springbrook first.
Yep.
Klein did them both, yeah.
Yeah, I think we just looked at this, it was nineteen seventy eight and seventy nine. Like the various buildings were completed.
That sounds about right architecturally. Okay. Well, so we're, we have an applicant before us tomorrow night and we'll process them so they can move forward with their application and then we'll figure out meeting with, having, meeting with Charlotte and the homeowners association to figure out how we bring parity between what they advise and what this, what the laws, what the standards say.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Fire company? Steve, we have a long one tonight.
Yeah.
Wow.
We have twenty nine alarms for August, one public assist. Six AFAs, I assume that's activated fire alarms. Four wires down. One mutual assistance with the North Island Fire Department tree on propane tanks. One elevator rescue. I don't know if that had anything to do with you, Bob, down at the town hall there.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, we said the elevator was having problems.
Yeah, we're not using it yet, but.
With the garrison fire. With the Garrison Fire Department, three CO2s or alarms, four breakneck mountain. There's no more details on that, but apparently four times they had to go to breakneck. Three E M S assists, another mutual aid with activated fire alarm and garrison, another mutual aid vehicle slash structure fire, North Island's Fire Department, one gas odor, one rubbish fire, and a motor vehicle accident. Very busy. They did the annual apparatus ladder testing, which was completed on eight nineteen. Building generator annual, annual service was on eight thirty-one and the hose testing is scheduled for nine seventeen. That's it? Good report.
That submitted by Tom Merrigan or by Matt?
It did not, it's unsigned, sorry.
That doesn't send them.
Tom Merrigan?
Yeah. Send reports.
Well, thank you, Tom. Tree Advisory Board? Is, or no?
No, she's not.
The T A, what's that? Okay, T A B held our regular public meeting via video conference Wednesday, August twenty-sixth. We're working on the following items. New York State D C Tree Grant, we are currently working on completion of the outstanding items on our D C grant, the bulk of which includes tree pruning and removal, finishing the last outstanding paperwork on Main Street and some inventory work that includes a numerical tree tagging. We are meeting with Mr. Downey at Highway Department this week to coordinate completion schedule for the pieces of the project he and his crew is working on. The grant should be on target to be substantially completed by the end of December. As part of the grant work, several of the locust trees in the Main Street Business District that are starting to come into conflict with buildings will be pruned. We will be making an illustrated summary presentation about the outcome of the grant work to the Village Board upon completion. Fall planting, we are making plans for our annual fall planting, which will include trees that were originally scheduled to be planted in the spring, but were canceled due to COVID-nineteen shutdown of board activities. Other miscellaneous, we have received a few preliminary inquiries about the proposed public tree art project for the dead Norway maple truck near the underpass of Main Street. We will keep the Village Board trustees updated as we release the proposed proposal request and receive official proposal. We will make a recommendation to you and final approval will be made by the Village Board of Trustees. We're also in the preliminary stages of updating our recommended planting list for the village to reflect current research on invasive species and best urban trees for our climate zone, and we'll share that with you when the draft is complete. Thank you, Jen. We don't have nothing from the board of chambers? No, okay. Water department, is Matt on or no?
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is. Water, wastewater.
Oh, I missed that one.
I'm here.
Hey, Matt, how are you?
Matt, not bad, how's everybody?
Good, welcome.
All right, so keep it short and sweet. The reservoirs are a little bit higher than they were last year, about point one percent. But the flow is down to the system, equally as much, one point four percent. Bacteriological lab tests were all found in good standing for last month. We did discover a water leak on Monday, the thirty-first. We spoke to the resident, they are currently looking for Village Bonded Plumber to address and repair. I just spoke to somebody else who got about that situation today, so they'll hopefully be moving on that relatively soon. I think it's about maybe five to ten gallons, being conservative guessing right now, but it's on the residence's curb box, so it's kind of hard, it's just not servicing to actually get a real flow rate on it. Hydrant flushing, we're going to be proposing to do that the week of the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. The annual drinking water quality report is, been at Putnam County for a while now, but we're going to move forward and send it out hopefully this week. And I still haven't heard anything from D E P on the Aqueduct project since May, but I would imagine that's primarily because nobody's in the office. On to wastewater, everything was good standing. B O D removal was ninety-six point five-four percent. T S S, those solids, ninety-six point seven percent. We had twenty-four thousand gallons of sludge hauled off site. We did do some camera inspections at one of the residences on Fair Street, right in front of Nine Fair Street. We did confirm that he does have a break in his sewer lateral before it connects up to the main. We discussed all the findings with him and that was basically where it was left, is that he needs to get that repaired before we do anything or entertain continuing with the patch in front of the road to address that situation.
On, on that one, Matt, is, would that be a reason for the depression in the road? Does that have anything to do with that or?
Well, it could be. I mean, we did the leak detect on the waterside back in November, December of two thousand nineteen. We didn't really hear anything substantial. We would have thought that we would have seen it if it was a water leak with just the amount of gallons that we potentially could have been lost, but we didn't hear anything on that. So following up at your request, we did the inspection of the sewer line and did find out that it is compromised. So he is notified that he does need to get that rectified. And then hopefully that'll stop the depression and then we can move forward with that.
The other question I had was when we were going through the financial report to Michelle, it was like water usage was up six thousand dollars. Is there a way to track that to the new onlines from Butterfield? Or is that just overall uses up in the whole village?
Well, I would imagine that overall usage is up. I mean, we started seeing increases back in April that, you know, when everyone was starting to stay home being under house arrest, so to speak. So they have been using more water. But I mean, anything that's before a water meter to going to a residence is pretty much untrackable unless we find it in the system. And luckily, like I said, we did find one on nineteen Parsonage. So hopefully that'll be rectified and then we can move forward there and then basically streamline and continue to look for leaks and go from there. Because we are up about, I think, fifty thousand from what the numbers Greg left is the annual usage or the annual average daily use was about two hundred and ten thousand a day. But I'm not sure when he came up with that number, I would imagine it was before Butterfield. I think Butterfield probably, when it's fully at capacity, is probably going to be about thirty thousand a day extra of usage in the distribution. So, but yeah, I mean, it's basically hunting and looking if it's not being registered on the Badger system.
Matt, Jeff and I had talked about the Butterfield usage because we, we were concerned as to where the water was coming from for the, for the park area. And I asked Jeff if he could pull a Butterfield usage for the past, what was it, three months or six months, Jeff?
I don't know, I think we'll go back to the first of the year.
Okay, so we should have, go ahead.
No, but we really can't pull that without having to go, without going through. There's no way to compare to last year.
No.
Many of the units weren't online.
No, but we can look at what use has occurred this year. So that would be an interesting, just to have that information would be very useful.
As far as the sprinklers go, we, well, we were told by Matt that, from, from Butterfield, that it's absolutely not coming from our system, though. That's right, right, Jeff?
Right. What he said is that they're collecting roof water and the roof water is feeding into the underground water tanks, which are what is being used to sprinkle the lawn.
Oh. Okay, didn't, did not know that.
Which is good when it rains.
Well, they have a storage thing, so they'd be able to monitor, I imagine.
Yeah.
For all concerned as I was, that there's a lot of water being used there, it was good to know.
Now, Charlotte had a meeting with, I think it was with Matt, I'm going to say one or two weeks ago. One of the things that Matt said, this is Matt Moran.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't remember having more than just a meeting.
So sorry, Matt, too many Mads.
Yeah.
One of the things that Matt said was that they, they collected the rainwater from the roofs and he also mentioned a ground well. And that's what I asked Charlotte to look into and I've forgotten to follow, follow up with her. The reason why that's a concern is, to the best of my knowledge, Matt, you and, and/or Greg never approved a ground well for Butterfield.
I definitely did not, so I don't have any recollection of what was done prior to approval for Butterfield.
But it may have been the way he phrased it that, that led me to that conclusion. So I'll follow up with Charlotte on that.
Okay.
Any questions for Matt, anything else? Okay, thank you, Matt, have a good evening.
Yes, you too.
Thank you for dealing with the Fair Street. I'm glad.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Okay, next is Building Department. We don't have one from Charlotte, Jeff put this together. So hopefully in our next, next monthly meeting, we'll work with Charlotte, our new code enforcement officer. So activities, new building permits, or ten building permits issued, we're seven, operating permits, one dumpster permits, one, C O's issued, three, record searches completed, six, and no complaints received. Referrals generated, H D R B, one, Z B A and planning, zero. Fees, applications and permit fees collected, nine hundred dollars. Record search fees collected, four hundred and fifty, other fees thirty for a monthly total in June for thirteen hundred and eighty dollars.
Dave, is that money still going to Phillips Town at this point?
No, I think, what did, what did we work out on that, Jeff?
What they got, ten weeks, we would pay them for ten weeks of Greg's time, which covers June first through the first week of August, August seventh when he returned the files.
Jeff, on this report, it's titled June twenty twenty. Is it really June twenty twenty or is it August?
August.
Thank you.
I will fix that. So the, the total amount due to Phillips Town is three thousand eight hundred and change.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jeff, for helping us work through this. I think Charlotte and Jeff have it pretty much under control. Yes, Jeff, do we need to sit down with Greg or is that helpful? I know it was offered.
I, I don't see that it's necessary, I'll let Charlotte make that call, but.
Okay.
I don't think it's, I think we kind of went over everything.
Okay, if you find, find the need, then reach out, but thank you for putting things in order, or close to, anyway.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Highway Department, Bugsy on?
Yes.
Bugsy?
Bugsy, is Robert's iPhone?
Yep, there he goes.
How you doing, folks? For the month of August, we had forty-nine point twenty-two tons. Recycling was nineteen point nine-five tons. Let's see, for the month of August, we had two brush collections, clean up from a hurricane with assistance from Phillips Town Tree, filled potholes, installed a new faucet in the visitor center's bathroom, curbs on Main Street, moved. Washed and sanitized. Cleaning garbage, Main Street and the dock.
Bugsy, you're cutting out.
Fifteen feet sidewalk on Morris Avenue. Tobacco, tobacco, got the.
Hey, Bugsy, hey, Bugsy, you're, you're kind of bleeping out and stuff, we can't quite hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Good.
Good, so far?
Okay, um, where should I go back to?
Guess the bathroom repairs on the faucet?
Okay, we, we installed a new faucet at the visitor center bathrooms, repaired thirty-two feet of curbs on Main Street, moved furniture for the P D, washed and sanitized all recycling and garbage cans on Main Street and the dock, removed and poured a hundred and fifteen feet of sidewalk on Morris Avenue and Craig Side Drive, serviced tobacco, the lawnmowers and weed whackers, replaced two leaking hydraulic lines on the backhoe that Phillips Town Highway Department made for us, and we had Hatfield Brothers Truck Service on site to repair faulty hydraulic lines. For the month of September, we have four sections of sidewalk that need to be fixed, tree limbs to trim and get ready for the pending autumn.
Okay, thank you, anything from the board?
Bugsy, I'm sorry. Brush collections, you having one a month or when you going to more than that?
We will have one for the month of September. And as soon as October hits, we'll go to a bi-weekly until it gets to the point where we will have to do it each week. I was up at West Hook Sand and Gravel, who does take brush and sticks and stuff. And I'll send you guys an email tomorrow about that, I was just up there today. But they charge roughly, it's two hundred dollars for the garbage truck, whether it's half full or completely full. And for us to go down to Wheel Abraider, it's about ninety dollars a ton, which we do a minimum of three to five tons when it gets heavy, especially if it's wet. So it'd definitely be a cost savings. But like I said, I'll shoot that all to you guys in an email tomorrow because it was late by the time I got done with them today.
When you get a chance, could you just text me the, the dates for October? I know September is the sixteenth, right, for the pickup? If you could.
It'll be the third Wednesday of the month.
Right, and then for October?
October, I will.
You can send it to me.
The first, okay, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, and I'll get it posted on the Facebook page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are the, the people using the, are we getting, moving away from, how's the plastic working these days? You know, we went to like asking for all paper for their, for the, for the brush and no plastics in the recycling, I believe, or?
No plastic bags in the recycling, for the most part, people have been great with that. They've, they're not putting it in bags, in plastic bags, so that's working for us. Boxes and everything they're using, which is great because those will break up in the truck and that is acceptable. As far as brush, like I said, I'll shoot you the email tomorrow about West Hook. If we do choose to go that route, we have to eliminate all plastic bags, they can only be put in paper.
Well, that's where we're going anyway, right? Didn't, I thought we passed.
Yes, we were trying to get away from the plastic.
Starting, starting September first.
Um, like I said, I want to shoot you the email first. We've been going to Wheel Abraider, but we are set up to go to West Hook if that's acceptable with you guys.
Sounds good.
I think what Marie and what I was just saying is though that we're supposed to, brush should be put out in, in paper now or boxes or whatever, but no plastic. Starting.
Yeah, no plastic, leaves put out in paper bags, sticks still again tied in four-foot length bundles, manageable bundles.
Okay.
I need, I need to get that. Get that in on Facebook, because that was, I did not post that clearly on Facebook.
Bugsy, the side, the sidewalks on Morris and Craig Side are great, nice job.
Thank you. We will be getting to Judy Baltages at nineteen Parsonage, but like Matt said, we have a water leak there in her service line. So she's going to have to dig up through there, so we're not touching that sidewalk. I do have a couple of sidewalks of record that I'm going to be taking care of in the next two weeks to get them taken care of and off our plate.
Okay, anything else?
Nah, no, that's about all for tonight.
Okay, we are working on, I talked to Michelle, we are working on the garbage truck still. It's, it's in motion, so hang on.
Yeah, we're, we're tooling right along.
We'll have every, every part in that, that truck replaced before we get a new one.
Possibly.
All right, well, thanks, have a good night.
Thanks, folks, you as well.
Thanks, Bugsy.
Hey, Bugsy.
Next, we have the justice report. Fines, forfeit, bails and civil penalties, $4,600. Parking tickets, $1,675. Civil fees, zero. Mandatory state surcharge, 911. Total is $7,186. Jeff, did you, did we hear when the courts are going to open?
They're going to start trying to set it up by officer. So with Carl leaving, they're going to try and hear all Carl's chases at the end of September. And see how that goes. I think that's their plan then is in October to try and do it. So court night is dedicated to an officer. Really can clear him out by that. So September, I believe September 28th will be the first court date. And that'll be specific to Carl. And then in October, they'll start rolling out more frequently.
If once we get the information, maybe we should put that in the paper or definitely on our website on how how that's going to work and what that's going to look like.
Yeah, and they they will also, they will contact and send out letters to everybody for when they're supposed to appear in court.
Right.
Defendants will know.
Yeah, I think we added that to some, you know, maybe just a news blast or something thing. That's how it'll work. And I know we talked about just having whoever was case it was, they would be the only people in the building. Others would wait outside and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, report mayor and board of trustees. Anyone like to comment, report?
Got nothing. Except code, code, code.
Anyone else? I don't know if it's on there. We didn't discuss the Steve, the attorney that Steve had talked to. I don't think it's on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, huh? It's not on the agenda.
Right. Would everyone be comfortable or what are your thoughts on having comfortable? I believe it was like he would work for no more than 10 hours and it was 200 an hour to review with Bart our situation with the water connection.
Well, he said that would be the max. Probably wouldn't take that long, but.
I thought he was going to send us a proposal outlining what he would accomplish.
I've not seen that. What I saw was hourly rate and how many hours, but I didn't see that.
He couldn't really do that without speaking to Bart first. He doesn't know what we need. Our our needs aren't identical to New Palters, so. He just knows that that we are struggling to come to an agreement with them. And if there's any leverage, he can see that we could gain on them. He'll be able to to advise us in that way, you know?
I'm hesitant to approve 10 hours, not knowing what we're going to get at the end of it, other than a conversation, him and Bart.
Can we, can we, Bart will be involved. So can we like hear Bart out after maybe three meetings or so and see where he thinks it's going or if it's going?
Well, I mean, I guess we could do that, but we he. Bart is going to have to provide him with, you know, like a sounding board or whatever for this guy and explain to him what what the stumbling blocks are with the DEP. And then he'll be able to 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 talk about what he's going to do. You know, he's not going to do a bunch of work to figure out what he can and can't do and then tell us what he can do. You know, he's an attorney. He works by the hour. So if you want to.
I understand that, but I'm I'm hesitant to say, okay, here's 10 hours. Go, you know, come back to us when you're finished with 10 hours. I don't know what we'll have.
Well, I think the 10 hours, well, maybe we could just ask him, Steve, if it could be. I I believe the 10 hours would be the review of of our, you know, current situation or whatever you'd like to call it with DEP, you know, and discussing with Bart. And on on completion of that review, a proposal. I mean, I'm not sure what else we, you know, he can give us.
Well, that's how it'll work. He'll he'll be able to tell us if he can help us or he'll be able to say, well, here's the direction you need to go in. Like that's, he's prepared to do either of those things, but this is just, he's saying it would never exceed 10 hours and that's what he said in his email, the one I forwarded to you. But that's just what he's going to need to get his mind around our situation. I really don't know what to ask him for, other than he's willing to help us and he's he's not open ended on hours. He's telling us it'll be less than 10 hours.
Okay, but are we going to be paying him for 10 hours plus Bart for 10 hours?
Well, we'll have to pay, well, no. However, many hours Bart puts into giving him this information and then he's going to have to go through it. So I don't know if that's, if they're both going to be sharing meetings or Bart. Bart says he can get most of the information to him via email and he can review it all without even really having to talk to him very much, other than an initial conversation so that, you know, Bart can fill them in better than I could.
I mean, considering where we have gone in the past million years or so that we've been dealing with this, I mean, I'm pretty good at letting somebody else who we think has a handle on it and has a little bit of history with this, at least give it a shot. We're going no place and we haven't been.
Yeah, he's been fighting against these people for decades and he was able to help New Palters. So again, New Palters has a lot more political pull with the university being there and everything. But he says if there's an original agreement, the 1912 agreement or whatever that is that we have, he said that they really have to give us the water. So that's really all I gleaned from it. And that's where he, that's how he approached it with New Palters as well. So they have the same agreement they made back in the turn of the century, turn of the last century. So it's a legit document that we have or I don't even know what to call it. It's not even a document agreement to allow them to run that through the township. So they have to provide water.
If it helps you feel more confident that we'll get something of value out of this, this same fellow was recommended to me by a friend of ours who lives in New New Palters when we were up there just talking about municipal issues. And and our friend Mark is very involved in conservation and stuff like that. And so he recommended the same guy, so.
Yeah.
I have confidence that this would move the project along. I mean, that dam's not getting any more sturdy by the year, so. Yeah, I think it'd be money well spent to get somebody on our side to negotiate, to at least devise a plan to move this plan forward.
My concern is that I have no idea personally. I have no idea what we end up with. Do we end up with a plan? Do we end up with him negotiating with the DEC or the DEP, whomever?
Okay. Well, we end up with a plan then at this for that cost. And if you want, if we need him and his services going forward with the DEP, then he would be hired, same as we hire any other attorney going forward. So this is more, he's going to give us our, his assessment of where we're at and what he thinks we can do. So that's, you know, there's no proposal to do more. But of course, he did say when I spoke to him last time that if we needed him, obviously we could hire him going forward. But he knows his position right now is he just wants to see where we're at and figure out what we can do. So he's not really eager to come here from Oneonta or Oswego, wherever he lives.
If if we get a plan from him, Dave, do you think John can pick up from there or do you think we need to?
Like I think this is like getting another set of eyes on it. John's been working on it and working with Bart and it's gone nowhere. This person seemed to have got, made some headway with him. So for him to review, and I think that's what we're paying for, a review of of our status with the hookup and recommendations at the end or a proposal on where we can go with it. I don't think he's going to give us a plan or 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 do any anything more than that. They were asking him to review all the information we have and for his opinion on how we think we can, you know, move.
What you just said is exactly what I asked him to do. And having Bart with his knowledge of it, you know, put those two guys together, they're going to do a lot more in two hours than anybody in this meeting could do in weeks because they're the DEP, years of DEP, and then Bart has been dealing with them as well, as well specifically in relation to our village, so, you know.
I think we've done basically the same when we've had a couple of planning board issues or or land issues and we've gotten Victoria Pondaro from, or I'm sure I'm mangling her name, from Rhinebeck to like to review and to give us, you know, her feedback on it. That was like open ended and if it's less than 10, that's that's $2,000. I personally think it's worth worth moving and trying to do something.
Me too. I mean, if you spoke to this guy, which you may want to do just for the heck of it, he is really, he he really does not like the the way they exercise their power there. And he's very interested in helping us if he can, because he, it's extremely unfair how they approach villages like ours in New Palters. And he's not happy with it.
So how does the board want to work? I I'll make a motion to hire, what's his name? Sorry.
David Merzig.
To review our with Bart Clark, our the status of our, yeah, connection to New York City DVP for no more at the hourly rate of $200 and no more than 10 hours.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Nay.
Nay, okay. I'll get in touch with the guy tomorrow.
Okay.
And Bart.
Anything else from the the board? I know that we're still concerned. I've seen a bunch of back and forths about Tots Park. I still think with all, I I did write to I haven't heard back, but I think she was on vacation. I'm not sure. And she really isn't the head of anything, of a a board or anything. But I did ask her if there were names or people she could put me in contact with. But as long as all those, that equipment is in there, I just really feel like it just makes absolutely no sense to open it up. And if people want to meet with other kids and on their own time, there's parks that are all open all around. I I don't see the problem. I mean, but not having someone to disinfect all those toys after all the use just seems careless to me, so. Just wanted to get rate that for all, not trying to punish anyone or there are things that are open, but why you'd want to, you know, mingle with other people in a tight area.
The situation we have right now is I'm going to say that at least 40% of the toys are on on the grass. And maybe 60%.
There's that many out? I haven't been by there. Maybe I'll let Bugsy remove them all.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Just take them all out of there. Just take them all out, store them.
I'm not suggesting to take out everything, just those things that are on the grass that kids are playing on now, get rid of those.
Right, okay. I will talk to Bugsy on that. Unless he's still on.
No, he isn't.
Okay. That kind of wraps up number 10, discussion on the proposed boundary line adjustment. I received this from Sina Hudson, you know, months ago, and then he was following up on it. So basically what it is, a small piece of property they want to sell, which are is located at the, I guess, is it the east end of our dam?
It's hard to tell from this drawing here.
It's the up, the upper dam. And it's a section where the dam is is attached to in an area, which we will definitely need in the event that we do any work there. They're willing to do all of the work as far as the line adjustment and surveys and all. They're asking us, I believe, to to take care of a cost of $2,702. That's the filing fees and recording fees. I believe that when John does it, Jeff, you'd probably know that when we, when John does the closing costs and stuff for the properties on Main, it's over $3,000, isn't it?
No, it doesn't, it's not that much. It really depends on the size. Usually figure out $1,000 to $1,200 for those small little pieces that we sell. It's typically the cost, depending on how much time and how they put into it.
Okay, well, it is an estimated cost. I I don't know. I think Lynn might have raised the question on the cost of the the whole thing. It's for upfront funds required to initiate, complete the transfer, including costs for survey drawings. So I guess they are doing that. Survey drawings, legal descriptions, indeed filing. So they basically give us the land. We we do the, we pay for the the cost of that, I guess.
Yeah, we usually, our costs don't include, well, we don't include surveys.
Right.
And the description, so that's above and beyond anything we ever paid.
Any thoughts, comments on this?
I think when you first sent this out, I may have asked the question. You know, I'm looking at this diagram right here and are the property owners of that house going to have any issues with this?
Which house?
No, but there's that, I believe you even lived there for a while, didn't you, Dave?
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the opposite side. That's on the opposite side of the dam. So this is already not their property. If you're looking at the.
Yeah, I'm looking at it backwards then, sorry.
Yep. So the other side, there's no, there's one house that's, you know, not far from there, but it's it's not interfering or taking anyone else's property.
This ties into our easement that we had already behind those, the houses that are there. Is that why it's convenient? That's what I thought they were saying, but.
Ah, yeah, that's part of it. The toll road goes on their property, not the toll road, the the access road. And according to them, that's the property there that would need to stage any construction is not our property. So we would have to, I'm sure we can get rates, I guess, but we have to do whatever.
Deep there, too. So it's such an embankment there.
So if everyone's good with this, I'll make a motion to to move this ahead with Sina Hudson and to pay for the expenses estimated at $2,702.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jeff, can you do whatever we have to follow through with Sina Hudson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I think Jeff just got this in. It was a request for a photo shoot on village property.
It's Beth Shoes. They want to do a quick photo shoot next Tuesday at Once Upon a Time, which is the shop next to Mid Moon.
Okay, what are they, what are they bringing or?
It's, it's one, one car, one van. It's eight people in total.
And handheld cameras.
Yeah, handheld cameras.
Did they talk to Once Upon a Time? Is Once Upon a Time have a problem with this?
No.
Okay.
Did they fill out the application?
No, Once Upon a Time doesn't have a problem with it. Yes, they don't.
Right, right, that's what I thought. The application for photography, yes, it's been filled out.
Okay. I have no problem with it.
I have no problem with it either.
What's the date, Jeff?
Yeah, September 15th, I think it is.
16, September 16th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the application for those dates and as described in their application.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, approve hiring of new police officer Scott Lombardi, Lombardo. The board went to executive session earlier today at 1 o'clock. Steve Aloto was was not present. Everyone else was. We reviewed the application and his resume. We went over his service with. Uh, we went over, uh, his service with, uh, with Officer in Charge Larry Burke, um, and then interviewed, uh, Scott. Um, he's a 22-year vet, I believe, and a sergeant, recently retired from, uh, Putnam County Sheriff's Department. Um, he's also, uh, like a 36-year member of the Fish Gill Fire Company or East Fish Gill. I'm not sure which. I think it's Fish Gill. He's familiar with the area. He's also just gone a, a part-time job, uh, with, uh, Village of Fish Gill, I believe. It just started in July. So Larry did do all the background checks. Uh, he did foil information, which I believe Larry said goes back three years, as far back as he can go right now. Uh, courts are kind of banging, bouncing back and forth on what information has to be, has to be given. And when, um, so under the current, uh, Larry went back as far as he could, um, and found, uh, nothing of note, um, and talked to Robert Langley. He was actually, Sheriff Langley was actually his trainer, um, at the beginning of his career. Um, so, uh, Robert Langley knows him well. And, uh, anyone, uh, would, rest of the board like to chime in kind of on the conversation we had? Anything?
No, he was, uh, I was impressed with him. He has a good background. He has a lot of, um, uh, different types of, of areas he was, he's worked in, K-9, um, Marine and so on and so forth. I think, I think he'll be a good fit.
So, um, we did impress upon him, um, you know, our, our need to do our responsible research, you know, you know, interview with him and also to do background checks and everything, um, which we've done, um, as, as much as we can and are allowed to do. Um, and Larry recommends, uh, the hire of him and after, uh, the interview, um, I feel the same way. He will be on, I think it's 40-month probation. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
A, a, for, a long probation. Um, he has been at the desk for a while, so he, the one concern was it might take a little bit of time to get back into the swing of things in a patrol car and, uh, you know, working with people, uh, and not being an after the, after the facts person. Um, but we'll see how that works. Um, and like I said, he's been in the area for, for 22 years. I believe he lives in Hopeful Junction. So I'll make a motion to hire, uh, Scott Lombardo, um, as a, a new officer in the, uh, Col Spring Police Department.
Oh, does he have all of his, um, you know, radar gun and?
Yes.
And all the qualifications?
Yes.
Cool.
Everything was updated and I believe was not, not too long ago, um, with everything. So, yeah, we're good on that. And I believe we're doing new training also. Uh, I believe Ed is doing some, some stuff, um, very soon on that. So he'll also be involved in that.
I'll second your motion.
No, sorry, Steve. I didn't, I didn't ask him. Does any, anything else?
No, I was just curious, just making sure. I wasn't there anyway. I will, I really.
Yeah, no, no, it's, uh, definitely, yeah, yeah, we asked, we got all that in the information on what he has, what he didn't have. Um, it seems like everything's totally in, in line and, uh, everything's in check out, so.
That's not always the case with these retired guys.
I did grill, grill him and say, "We don't want this to come back. We don't want there to be, is there anything?" And, uh, he said, "No." Of course, what would you say? But, uh, anyway, I think we did our, our due diligence once again. Uh, so if there's nothing else, uh, from the board, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome Scott and, uh, hopefully this works out well. Uh, Larry is down. We have one of our officers, uh, our newer officers taking a full-time job and that we do have one person that's out from an injury in the, I believe, New York, uh, City Fire Department. He works full-time and, uh, he hasn't been available for a while. So Larry was down to 10 officers and trying to build this up. So this, this will definitely help. All right, thank you. Uh, next is the discussion on parking. I don't know if you want, we want to get into this thing. We're not going to, uh, not going to go too far with it or we won't have time for much else if we start getting into the parking. Um, it's on there. We, it seemed like this weekend was crazy. I was not here, uh, according to Larry and other, uh, residents, a couple of residents I talked to, not only parking but traffic, uh, was, was an issue. It was like more than, more than the usual. We did put up cones kind of prevent parking down and maybe, uh, maybe, uh, limit the parking a bit down at Mayor's Park. Um, and that didn't seem to work. They just moved cones out of the way and parked there anyway. Our officers, they'd give out a lot of tickets, like 50 or more, 100. I forget what Larry said, but a lot of tickets were given out. Uh, people seem to be parking farther and farther away from the main streets now. Um, on Belvedere and West Belvedere, I guess, uh, they were parking and, uh, lot, and Haldane is now full. So I thought we should start a discussion on parking, but, um, it is getting late and, uh, maybe tonight isn't actually the, the night to start that. So, uh, I think unless anyone wants to talk about this now, uh, your feelings?
Well, in general, what do you, like, you mean, like, what?
I, I mean, I think we got to discuss basically parking in the whole village, where there should be hourly parking. I mean, it goes, there's, there's a lot to discuss once we start talking about it. Whether we should try to limit parking, whether we should put up, uh, you know, put up more meters. I mean, if we can't stop it, you know, should we put meters up down at Mayor's Park, have, uh, you know, residents for free with a permit, you know, that's free and then, and then charge, um, to discuss, you know, parking with, with Haldane, uh, meters everywhere else, the hourly parking, you know, on Main Street, whether that should be changed, you know, to maybe a little bit less, uh, parking on, on, uh, Fair Street on Sundays, um, you know, whether to continue like on with, you know, the parking for the full day once it starts. But that's the way it is now. I mean, even when COVID started, there was no church and was still open. So, you know, there's all those things that kind of discuss. Uh, not sure where we're going to go with anything.
I think a lot, a lot of the people who are parking, they're not parking for the benefit of the village. They're parking so they can hike. Um, so they, they're heading to the trails. I don't know, you know, can we stand with that?
And there's also raising any of our, uh, fees, we would have to, you know, there's by resolution and, and law with a public hearing, I think, on most of it. So nothing's going to happen immediately, probably not until the spring, but, uh, we can start getting stuff in place. Um, I think Marie has a better handle on how long it would take. I, I don't know if we'd get anything done before mid-October, which is pretty much, the season's fairly much over.
Send everybody, um, the current parking fees. Um, increasing the current parking fees, uh, most of the, sorry, let me back up. Uh, the parking lot is $50 for a ticket. Um, I believe Main Street is, is either $45 or $50 a ticket. Uh, raising the, the fees for tickets would yield maybe $5 more per ticket. And according to Larry, the cost of the ticket is not a deterrent. People are willing to pay whatever the ticket is to be able to park and just ignore the, the, the requirement to move every four hours or three hours or two hours or one hour or whatever.
And there were two, you know, two instances which, uh, you know, one was from Evan Thompson down at Parks who, you know, not confronted, but was talking to someone parked illegally and said, "Move." And same with Larry Burke, um, you know, and they said, "Well, what's the ticket?" And they said, "Fine." And they left their cars. So, uh, that, it's not a deterrent. So if we're going to have that, I mean, we could raise it to $100, gonna raise it to whatever. I, I guess it's not going to be a deterrent. People are going to do what they want. It seemed like there was excessive number of U-turns according to Larry. Uh, one person said they couldn't even make it out of, like, Campbell to get up to, uh, you know, out of the village. It took them like 10 minutes. The traffic was so bad.
Yeah.
I mean, that's another, maybe nothing you can even do about it, but, so.
I think it's part of a larger discussion. I think we need to look at it comprehensively. Just, just based on our conversation today, I would be really in favor of reducing the number of hours of free parking on Main Street from 4 to 2. I would also be in favor of, um, getting a little more aggressive about towing and changing the signs, saying, you know, just letting people know that if you overpark and don't pay, we're going to tow you. Um, and then also putting meters up along at Mayor's Park. I'm totally in favor of that. So.
Okay, so maybe we'll put this on next, next month's agenda and, uh, and, and work with, with it then and, uh, go from there. In the meantime, maybe, uh, find out the costs and if you haven't already, Marie, on what it would cost for one, I guess we'd only need one station down at Mayor's Park?
Correct, one station and we have the price. It's 8, 8,400 and then there's the installation, the delivery and installation cost. Uh, we'd also have to put up numbered spaces, numbers for the spaces. And as I said before, I'd recommend that we extend the parking lot at Mayor's Park further to the south in front of the wastewater treatment plant to get more bang for the buck out of the meter.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would also be in favor of straightening that parking. So instead of like diagonal parking there, the way everybody does, it's a, you know, you have to make a 90-degree turn to park in there instead of a 45.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that gives you more parking spaces if you do that, but it also, um, causes the cars to protrude further, uh, out from the fence.
You mean, it's not deep enough to really hold?
I don't know. We could check that out then. It might not be.
At one point, a number of years ago, there was discussion when we talked about the fjord trail. Uh, we were down there and Catherine was still on the board because I was down there too. Um, the people who were going to do the fjord trail were going to move, we were going to move that fence and give them some more space so they could pave there. Or they were going to pay to move the fence in. And I believe there was an agreement of a couple of feet, not much, but enough to give them more, more space to pave.
I believe, I believe that the fjord trail is now looking at a different route as opposed to going along Fair Street, uh, rather going on the river. So that problem may go away.
And I believe that there was talk about putting one or two handicap spaces there by Mayor's Park that were designated handicapped.
Uh, if, if anything, I'd go with one, which is what we have at the municipal lot. There is a, um, a, a section in 126, which I also sent, uh, which I also sent an email to you, which references the municipal parking lot. So if we do a second municipal parking lot, we would have to make a change to that section as the code, which can be done in the same resolution and the same public hearing. It's, it's not a major inhibitor.
Okay.
Next one.
Speaking of the, uh, the handicap parking, I didn't get, as I promised, to talk to Joe Prusenda, so I will follow up with that this week. That was the one on Stone Street.
Before you go on to, uh, anything else, um, we're, Jason Angle, Angle?
Yeah.
Had requested the, um, bike event.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Right, which is, I think, this Saturday. And one of the requests as part of the event is to have a crossing guard at the intersection of Main, um, Orchard and Fishville.
Yes, you're right. And you want to volunteer for that. That's wonderful.
Can we, can we, uh, have our, one of our, um, uh, school crossing guards do that?
If, if they're available, yeah. Can we find out? Uh?
Yeah.
We'll have to do it quickly, but.
And, and what they're doing this year is instead of having a, like a kickoff, you know, everybody leaves at a certain time, it's going to be the entire morning.
That's right.
Right, so we would need somebody there from 9:00 AM to noon.
Right, okay. All right, so Jeff, if you could ask or see if we have someone. If not, let me know quickly. And I'm not going to volunteer right away, but.
Marie, I, I see, I see that the proposed date was September 26th.
Did I have the wrong date, Fran?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out. Let me just see something for a second. Okay, the, the email that was sent September 2nd, proposed date for the bike day would be Saturday, September 26th from 9:00 to 12:00.
I'm so sorry, everybody. I got the wrong date.
That's okay. We need to do that anyway.
Okay. Okay, so we have a little bit of time.
I will check with, uh, um, with the crossing guard, see if they're available. If not, do you want to ask Nico if he's available that morning?
Uh, sure. That would be great. Thank you. Good idea. Okay, so, uh, uh, the one other thing is that I should have brought up before was whether we should have, I know it was because of C Street, but, um, and maybe we can gauge it better this week. We did have, uh, did have the, uh, Labor Day weekend, although it's kind of a strange weekend in this COVID world, but, uh, we did have, uh, two police officers on duty. And if things are as crazy as they sound like they did get, is that something we should entertain, uh, putting another police officer on, at least for four hours like we did during the, uh, C Street?
Well, wait, we did the C, the C Street police officer was there from, um, 10:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I don't know when the prime time for Main Street is, whether or not it's from 11 to 3 or from noon until 4. What I can certainly do is tell you when the, um, the municipal parking lot gets hit.
Uh-huh.
I can tell you what the, um, arrival rate looks like.
Okay. I think it usually, I've been down there till noon seems to be okay and then it just starts picking up after that or one. I think Larry said actually 2 to 4 or whatever is a very busy time, but I think last, this weekend it was, well, I was pulled in late on Sunday and it was, there were still bunches of people and streams, but it wasn't that bad. But anyway, um, I guess we'll talk to Larry about that. Hope, and I think we should consider adding another police officer. Maybe see how this weekend, maybe it was just because the, the Labor Day three-day weekend, which like I said, is, I don't know, are there weekends anymore?
The one thing I can tell you is that, um, the, for the parking lot, it was at capacity Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. I've never seen that before, that we've had four days in a row where it's been at capacity.
Right. Yeah.
It would be helpful to have a second officer at least walking up and down Main Street and giving tickets to everyone who makes a U-turn or catching as many U-turn people as he can possibly catch.
Right. Okay, um, I'll talk to Larry to see if we get a little more on that and, uh, like, when the best hours would be and, uh, I guess see how this weekend works. And definitely when the leaves start turning, it's going to be crazy, but if not from here on in. Thanks. Um, sorry to go off the rails again. Approvals of bills, uh?
I, I would move this, except I don't have the information on my agenda. I don't have the batch number or the total.
So, so I'll do that for you, Lynn.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve batch number 5731 in the amount of $40,496.79.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Uh, approval of the minutes, uh, 8/18/2020, the Village Board trustees, make a motion.
I have a couple of changes for that.
Okay.
And, let's see. For the 8/18, um, Jeff, in the, uh, for the Myers, the first whereas, it should be families, apostrophe S. Do you see that?
Okay, yeah.
And, um, next line down Moffett Road and Healy Road, left parentheses, consisting of two, two tat slots. So you need, there's, you need for a left parentheses in there. Um, and this one is my error, under Board Business. Uh, Jason's first line, the mayor has received an, an email from, uh, Jason A-N-G-E-L-L, double L.
I've got, are you finished, Marie?
Yes, I am, Fran.
Okay, I've got one on, on the 18th and I apologize because I haven't reviewed them that closely. But right at the beginning, shouldn't there be, uh, something saying about who presented, um, this motion? Or am I missing something?
It, it, it says, uh, right underneath the box, it says, "The following was presented by Mayor Morandi and seconded by."
Okay, sorry. Okay.
That's, that's the problem, Fran. The roll call vote is above. Jeff, if you could, if you could take the following and move it up prior to the roll call vote. if you could take the following and move it up prior to the roll call vote, do you see what?
Yeah.
Okay. Good eyes, Fran.
Is that it for the eighteenth?
Yes.
Just for the eighteenth?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve eight eighteen with the modification is just made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, make a motion to approve eight twenty-five, two thousand twenty.
Okay, some changes there under, on page, on the page where it says correspondence. I think it's page six.
Yeah.
The word correspondence is slightly misspelled.
Yeah.
And let's see if there's anything else. On the next page, the paragraph that says, during the discussion, it was noted that the town is preparing blah, 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 from Jewel, left paren, the community choice administrator, left paren, CCA, right paren, right paren. We need a second right paren. That's it for me.
Okay, so before we move on that one, what about the last one? Are there changes need to be made on that?
Nine, one?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, under Board Business, it refers to the attorney that helped New Paltz with their dealings with the, it says DEC instead of DEP. Should be DEP.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay. So backing up to eight twenty-five, I'll make a motion to accept with the few changes we just made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And final, nine oh one, two thousand twenty, I'll make a motion to approve that with the one change made Steve just mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else from the board before we go to public comment?
Nope.
Okay, public comment. Anyone out there, Jeff?
Yeah, Heidi, as her hand raised.
Hello. Hi, Heidi. So I wanted to ask why the hiring of the new police officer was happening without public input, given that there's the, you know, the state mandated review and that a lot of places, including Beacon or Neighbor, are embracing having citizens involved in these kinds of things. And I know that there was a lot of interest here. So I'm just wondering why the decision was made to, to do the interview in private and to, and to not have, have the public more involved.
Well, I feel as, as elected officials, that we're the people that should be reviewing and interviewing candidates. And I believe in this setting, having our officer in charge and having all the information presented to us, that I feel that people should have confidence in us that we're doing the right thing.
Okay, yeah, I, I, well, I won't. I guess I would just follow up then. When do you expect to create public input for the review of the police department? Do, do you have a time in mind that citizens can step up and be involved? Or, because I know the deadline's not till the spring of next year, but I'm wondering if you have plans for that sooner?
Talking to Larry, I've been kind of bogged down a bit, so I haven't reviewed. He had sent me a hundred-page policy or whatever. I'm not sure where it was from to review as a starting point. So yeah, as soon as we have a base to work off of, then we're going to have a public meeting and, and discuss everything that's in what we feel is a decent policy.
Okay. And that hiring of another officer couldn't wait until after that? Is that...
Probably not.
No, and I, I don't know where the hiring of another officer, why a larger group of people would be needed. What, what input would you have in looking at, looking at someone's resume and their...
Well, just based on what happened last time. I mean, we all, I mean, that's...
What did happen last time?
What happened last time is that people objected to who you hired based on their past involvement in the shooting of a teenager.
Did they know about that at the time?
They didn't know. Right. My point is if they knew at the time, they could have had input. And so that's why I'm speaking up now, is just to say, hey, if you're doing this in a way that the larger community of the village doesn't know about, do you, is there something to be learned from last time when people found out after the fact and said, hey, you are elected officials and we don't agree with this decision you made? So as elected officials, can we be more inclusive of the community that we're representing?
Heidi, when you apply for a job, do you want to be interviewed by a group of random people who don't really know anything about the job that you're intending to do?
If I'm supposed to be working for them, then I would say yes. I mean, if I am applying for a job and I'm working for someone, which is what, you know, police officers, elected officials, everyone does, they work for the people, then I would say yes, they, of course they have a right to ask me questions and interview me.
I, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a very bad precedent to start. First of all, the Labor Board is very protective of people in the hiring and interview process, whatever job there is, whatever job it is, whether it's a public or a private job. I, there's a certain assumption of privacy when you're interviewing for a job, and we're the ones that are elected to do that work. And, you know, if there's a problem with it later, then they can bring it up later. He's on, he's on probation for forty months. And I will go on record and say that the public's response to Scott Morrison was shameful. Everybody who objected to him should, I don't think anybody ever spoke to him. And I'm going to say that that's...
It's not about, it's not about, is he a nice man or not? That has nothing...
I know that, Heidi. I know that very well.
I, I am saying that, A, I'm asking why there, it hasn't been a more open and transparent process for this hiring, you know? Regardless, I understand a lot of people were upset with how people react to Scott Morris. I, I personally think it's shameful for different reasons. But I think a transparent process can avoid a lot of these misunderstandings and a lot of these, a lot of the reactions that we saw last time. If you say, hey, you know, we're here to serve you.
Pandora's box. And we'll never be able to hire anybody and we'll never get any good applicants if everybody had, you know, if anybody wants to apply for a job in the village is facing a whole room full of, of random people who don't really know the scope of the work at hand. So I think it's important that the people who are actually interviewing people have some sort of understanding of what the scope of the job is, not just some random person off the street.
Sure. I guess I don't think of like the, the people who live in the village as random people off the street. I mean, they're, the people who live here are, are educated, interesting, invested people. So I guess I just don't see why there's a threat to being inclusive in the process.
First of all, I don't, I wouldn't say this is a threat. I don't feel like it is a threat at all. I just think that I'm an elected official and, and we're presented with a small pool of people that would like to be part-time officers in our area, and we do our due diligence. I will not, that last hire, you're saying that it went, that was wrong or whatever, and there's some people...
No, I'm saying that people objected to it. I'm not making a value judgment.
Okay, that they objected to it, yes. And, and, and I believe we did everything that was possible, and I would stand behind my decision. If, if what had happened with the whole environment and with Black Lives Matter and everything that has happened now, in retrospect, maybe we wouldn't have went that way. Or maybe we would have, you know, just said, well, they're going to object because of this. But looking at all the information we had, you had five people up there that have been elected by the people and have lived here for quite a while. And I feel like we're trying and do the best we possibly can for people. I don't see how involving more and more people, everyone with their own opinion on something, how that will make a better process and a better hire.
I agree with you, Dave.
Okay. I mean, yeah, that's, you know, I'm looking forward to working with you next year. And I obviously have differing opinions about how inclusive we can be of our citizens. I was looking for an answer on this particular issue right now. Again, I'm not making a value judgment on you. But I, I, yeah, I look forward to melding of, of minds next year. So thank you for answering my questions.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
Kathleen Foley as her hand raised.
Who was that? Sorry.
Kathleen.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Hi, Jeff.
Yeah, I have headphones on this time, so hopefully it's better with the noise in the background. A couple of quick things. I will volunteer if you are, do not, if you're short crosswalkers for the bicycle event. That's my neighborhood. I'm happy to help. So let me know. I wonder if the, I recently sat on Church Street on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, I don't remember which, and was really struck by the amount of parking happening on that block and on Northern Avenue and then going on to the trails. You know, inevitably if we close parking lots closer to the trails, we're going to have people parking in the village and that's playing out. I wonder if there isn't a way to make lemonade from lemons. The trolley is not worth much for anything else. Is there any remote parking area that we can use outside of the village from which the trolley could drop people at trailheads? That would be infinitely more useful than the loop that it takes now. It's funded with federal dollars, which is, at the end of the day, is our money too. So I'm wondering if we can, if there's a possibility for making that so effective. If the county tourism department wants to continue to ask people to come to Cold Spring, they need to help us. And that seems like an option to relieve some of the burden on residential streets. But it is, you're right, Dave, that there is beginning to be more and more impact on a greater number of residential streets as people park farther and farther from Main Street. And I mean, I suppose in some way you could argue that that shares the burden across different neighborhoods around the village where more people are dealing with parking. So there are a couple of ways to think about it.
I think we, we talked about the trolley today. We believe the trolley has not been activated this year because of COVID.
Well, we're paying quite a lot of money for the trolley, quite a lot of tax dollars for the trolley. Maybe it's time to activate the trolley for the fall season. I realize that's not our decision to make. That's a county decision to make.
It's a health decision as well.
And a health decision as well. But if they're going to be promoting us as a tourist destination where people are going to come and be dense on our streets, then they also need, might need to help us with that. Yeah, I really, I do, I do understand that we have been given signage and, well, no, we paid for signage, but we've given, been given antiseptics for our bathrooms. But it strikes me that there are other opportunities for the county to help us with its tourism office. Just throwing it out there as an idea.
I thought that, I thought last year they looked at the trolley having a drop-off at Little Stoney Point. I, I will tell you that the parking at, at the Haldane Parking Lot was totally for the trailheads.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So when, when Dave talked about the Haldane Parking Lot, Eastern West Belvedere, that's all trailheads. And Mayor's Park is also trailheads.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that, I'm asking, I don't know, I'm asking whether there is a remote location to which parkers can be, people parking can be directed to then get on the trolley and be brought to the trailheads or brought into the village so that the car congestion is reduced. I don't know what that place would be. I mean, I don't know. Maybe it might be our rec center, another public owned property.
Metro North Parking Lot. The Metro North Parking Lot is always, always terribly under, underutilized on weekends. And Metro North will not put up a sign directing people to park there.
So, so maybe Metro, maybe Metro North isn't, maybe Metro North isn't the answer, but you know, I, I know, is the rec center an option? I don't, I don't know. I'm just throwing out the idea that we have resources and we need help and maybe conversations about how the resources can be brought together would be helpful. I'm not saying that you have not done your best. I know you've done your best. But it seems as if we, there, there may be opportunities to take advantage of resources that we have to relieve some of the congestion we're getting because of increased tourism and people wanting to come out of the city. How do we make their stay enjoyable and, and alleviate some of the impact on residents?
We were thinking, we were thinking of Locust Ridge. We were thinking of directing...
I mean, you'd be shocked, you'd be shocked, that the parking is coming up Main Street and onto our blocks. I am not unaffected on Locust Ridge.
I think all this parking is a result of the closing of all the parking up at Tunnel. So they're just coming all the way back to the village.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Walking three miles or whatever it is to get to Breakneck from there. So it's, I think that, I mean, it's so unsafe there, the way people used to park previously. It still is unsafe, the way people walk around the tunnel and all that. But, you know, this is happening because of the, what the parks is doing by limiting that parking. So they're involved in our issue with the people parking too much in the village. It's a result of that.
Absolutely.
I don't know if we can tell it to them that way, and maybe they'll have input or don't tell us.
I'm just wondering if we can find, I'm just wondering if we can find creative solutions. I think you're absolutely right, Steve. I mean, I, I had never seen anything on Church Street like I saw, it was a Sunday afternoon, like I saw that Sunday afternoon.
They're everywhere.
They're, it's everywhere. And, 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 and so we are grateful for the economic vitality it brings, but we also need to think about...
I'm not making money off it.
Those impacts. You know what?
I'm not making any money off it. Well, we're getting a lot of parking tickets, I guess.
I guess. I'm just wondering. We have the resource, we have the trolley, maybe there's a way. If you're gonna, if you're gonna tell, if you're gonna encourage tourists to come, then help us deal with the impacts. Okay, so that was a small thing. I don't want to go on and on all night. Another, another idea that is, I can't read my own handwriting on this note, but not necessarily popular, and it's, it's, you know, it is risky even saying it out loud, but I also have a property in the, in the city of Vithica, where, you know, my home, my hometown area. And the cost of yard waste, it used, it used to be free to put out yard waste, and it is no longer free. Now, we buy tags for yard, yard waste in the same way we buy tags for garbage because it is a cost that is incurred by the municipality. And I know that folks say, well, I pay my taxes, that should be enough. I mean, maybe we need to think about either how we tax for that issue or, or how we, how we pass along cost. If we're all putting yard waste in, maybe we all need to pay.
I've lived in towns where you have to buy those paper bags from the village or the town.
Right, me too.
And that's part of the charge. And then, you know, that way you, you're more careful with what you put out there because you're buying the bags. And I mean, the bags are more than fifty cents. They're...
Right. It's, it's a reasonable investment for, yeah.
Well beyond the cost of the bags. But then that way you, you know, people are more mindful of what they're sticking out there because it's not free.
All too true. And I also think that the public doesn't, the public doesn't realize how challenging, I mean, I did not know until listening to Bugsy a few weeks back, I did not realize how challenged we were with dealing with yard waste. So, you know, I thought, well, it gets dumped over the hill in a compost and it's fine, but it's clearly not fine. It's cost. So, you know, maybe, maybe it's both a public education campaign, but also maybe it's something to consider. Okay, I'm going to have a lot of hate mail after that. That's all I had. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
We have anyone else on, Jeff?
There are no other entries.
Okay. Anything else from the board? It's eight twenty. I don't think it makes much sense going into our code update at this point. So we, next week, we have Tuesday. I don't know what we have on the agenda. We can...
Code, code, code.
Besides, I mean, we can have that. And if, if you want, I mean, if there's a time, we could have one more meeting that week if people want to get into it. I'll leave that up to you. But let's just schedule...
I can't get enough of it personally. Having so much fun.
So we have...
Wake up in the morning and rush to my computer just so I can review.
Yeah, forget coffee sometimes. So excited.
So we have a nine fifteen code meeting, and then there's a nine twenty-two board meeting. And I think we should schedule a nine twenty-nine code meeting.
Do we want to, I mean, do you want to do a second code meeting next week?
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, oh, okay. Sure.
What, on Wednesday or something?
Yeah. Yeah, can people do that? Well, limited to.
I don't know how. I assume I can, but I'm not sure.
I'm not good for Wednesday, but I'm good for Thursday or Friday.
Friday's up.
Or even Monday if you want.
As Thursday sound.
I thought somebody said no to Thursday.
No, I'm good for Thursday.
You mean Thursday to 10th?
No, Thursday the 17th.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got the 15th and the 17th.
Yeah.
I did, I did make adjustments. This is September, not August. I did make adjustments to 71, if anyone wants to take a look at it.
71 was.
Licensing.
Licensing?
Yes.
Close.
Was there just your, your changes that were needed on that?
You had made suggestions about taking things out that have exceptions on them, exemptions. You didn't want, you didn't want so much to be exempt, so I took those out. I also spoke to Larry about the criminal background checks and fingerprinting. Larry said they can do the criminal background checks. He didn't think fingerprinting was necessary for doing a criminal background check, and that is now done remotely, and the cost for fingerprinting is now $100 within, in the county, so. He said they can do the criminal background checks, so I took the fingerprinting piece out of it. So that was about it.
Fran, I made a couple of comments.
Okay, I didn't look at that. So we're meeting for code next week at 6:30?
Yes.
Okay.
And 6:30 on Thursday too?
Yes. Okay, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I will second the motion.
Dave's got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Good night all, thank you.
Good night, everyone, good night.